Very good. Thank you very much. Before, Commissioner Quintero, please.
He's on mute.
Okay, sorry about that. If y'all would join me in prayer, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Father, we turn to you in trust as we meet this evening, and we thank you for the many blessings and reminders around us of your greatness and goodness. Help us to attain and accomplish everything we need to for this great city of Harlingen. God bless our constituency, and God bless Harlingen. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. All right, thank you for the invocation, Commissioner Quintero, and at this time I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and welcome everyone who's participating via Zoom. We appreciate your continued patience as we work through the pandemic and that we continue to do our part to avoid the spread and transmission of COVID-19 by having these virtual meetings. Thank you again. At this time, I'll call on item or Citizen Communication and Input.
Mayor, we have one, Mr. Mario Reyna, 115 West McIntyre Street. He would like to be called on item number five. This is at the time that it's being discussed, Mayor.
Okay, and during the public hearing on item?
Yes.
We'll call Mr. Reyna. There being no other folks who have signed up to be called or to have their statements read on Citizen Communication, we'll go to item one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on September 2nd, 2020.
Debatation from an approver.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Della Rosa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item two A and B are consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Mayor, I need to leave the meeting. I've signed a form with the City Secretary regarding item two B.
All right, we'll recognize the abstention by Commissioner Della Rosa on two B, and now I will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Tom move, Mayor.
Second.
There are a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. We can invite Commissioner Della Rosa to return. Item three, a presentation discussion by Robert Rodriguez, Finance Director, regarding the CARES Act funding.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'd like to give a brief overview of the current status of our CARES Act funding, of financial status. Okay, so. I'll begin with the sources of funds. So in June, on June 3rd, 2020, we received $751,608 in funding for coronavirus, and that was advanced to us, and we did receive that funding on June 3rd. We have remaining funds of $3,6432, which we have not yet received, so those reimbursements are under review and pending TIDAM approval. So we have not received those funds. The uses of the funds that we have so far are $182,571.89 have been reviewed and approved by TIDAM for public safety salaries, and those will go towards offsetting the initial $751,608. So before we receive any other funding from TIDAM, we would have to offset the $751 that was initially received, and that's about 20% of the total allocation, which is $3,758,040. The remaining $3,575,468.11, that is still pending TIDAM review, and those are all public safety salaries. So as you see, we've been allocated $3,758,000, and we have expenditures, reimbursements of $3,758,000. On the next slide, these are the amounts that we have actually committed or expended as of this date. Some of the larger ones are the use of the auditorium and the custody of the stock complex of $298,381. We have fire payroll in excess of our budget, which is the fire watch at the auditorium during the pandemic, which amounted to $117,334, public safety hazard pay of $140,000. The loaves and fishes commitment, and we've also already advanced them some money, and they've already spent the money on certain utility for citizens of $225,000. And then we have other building modifications, PPE, for a total of $994,726 of funds that we've either committed or have already spent from our budgets. This is a brief summary of the citizen economic support payments. For mortgage assistance, we have provided $18,653 rental assistance, $52,000, $12 electricity utility assistance, $11,000, water sewer of $2,500, gas utility assistance of $304, for a total of $93,178 on the citizen economic support payments. And this was as of October 21. So we have already advanced them $150,000, and they have provided us supporting documentation for the $93,000. So as they begin to advance those funds to the citizens, they'll provide us additional support, and then we'll move on to the next phase of funding an additional $50,000. But at this point, they provided $93,178. So as we move on through the pandemic, there have been additional requests for CARES funding of the funding that the city has received through TIDAM. Some of the requests have come in through the Harlingen CISD operations, and theirs range from between 10% and 25%, so they're asking if we can provide funding between 370 and 925. So they were supposed to have, the school district was supposed to have a webinar with TIDAM regarding this funding, because the deadline for providing this funding was October 1st, and so they did not approach the city until the end of September, around September 24th, 28th. So they didn't meet with us in time for the deadline to provide you all with information to make that decision. So they were looking to TIDAM for additional guidance to see if they could get an extension on getting that funding. And so the meeting was supposed to be Friday, and TIDAM canceled the meeting and postponed it till a further date, which they have not gotten that date yet. But that funding would range anywhere between 10% and 25%.
Robert, if I can, just to elaborate, Mayor Commissioners, the 10% and 25% is based on a CARES allocation that the school district received of $3.7 million. That funding came with some conditions, and those conditions were they were able to secure local match funding. They could keep more of the 3.7. For example, if they received 10% of local match, they were able to keep up to, I believe it's 50%, Robert?
That's correct, yes, sir.
50% of the 3.7 million. If they came up with 25%, they get to keep 100% of the 3.7 million. So that's where their request came from, and that's what the 10 and 25% represent. Go ahead, Robert, sorry.
They did get additional CARES funding also, which they are getting through TIDAM as well. They've got some for payroll, they've got some for PPE, and some for technology. Additional requests are from EDC for the help program. They're requesting $500,000 in forgivable loans for businesses. The city Wi-Fi project would be another potential source of funding that comes at a price of $368,000. The UT Health School of Medicine also wants to put a local lab with startup costs of $93,000 and testing of $81,000 for a total of $174,000. The Harlingen Housing Authority has requested $100,000. So for the total, depending on if any of these fundings are considered, it could range from $1,512,000 from the low range and $2,677,000 on the high range if that were to be considered. The $994 are the expenditures and commitments that we've already made to this point. So that would leave unrealized, unallocated funds in excess of what we've already spent of this range. So if you go from the low range to the high range, it could be anywhere from $1,251,314 remaining to $696,314,000 remaining if you were to go to the higher range. And so just to reconcile back to the amount of CARES funds that we've gotten, which is $3 million, or we haven't gotten them all yet, but that's what has been allocated to us is $3,758,040.
And we have not brought a formal request. Can you go back? We have not brought a formal request to the City Commission for the EDC help program. We just wanted to, that you know that this is out there. The Wi-Fi project, there is no direction as to move forward with that as of yet. The UT School of Medicine, that is something that we may bring up to the City Council at the next meeting, but we're still looking at that information. And the Housing Authority request, that is something that is on this agenda, and we're going to be talking about it a little later. So just wanted to point out that these are kind of requests that are out there, is still under review and consideration, but the City Council has not been given any information on this, or the staff has been provided direction on moving forward with any of this at this point.
So just on the last slide, in conclusion, we've only received 20% of allocation of $3,707,000, so we've only received $751,608. We are still pending $3,6432 of the funding. So those amounts are still under review by TIDAM. I can give you a quick overview of the status of those funds. So in TIDAM's review process, this first, there are 17 RFRs that the city of Harlingen has submitted for reimbursement. Only one of them has completed the whole workflow status process. So they have approved $182,571 to offset against the initial 20% of the $750,000. One of the reimbursements has reached the status of validation, which is one step closer to being complete. Four reimbursements are having performing tests, which are performing audit to vet the expenditures to ensure that we have made those expenditures and they are ready for reimbursement. And 11 of those reimbursements are still under expense and documentation review, which is the third step of a seven-step workflow process. So it has been a slow process for them to review and approve them, but in the past few couple of weeks, they have gained up speed. They stayed in a workflow status of one for over a month, but now we are starting to see that they're starting to move through the process and starting to be reviewed and approved.
Yeah, we've gotten quite a bit of movement in the past two days.
Yeah, the majority of the movement has been in the past two days. So that's kind of the status of the CARES Act funding, and just keep in mind that we have not received all of the $3,758,000. We have only received $751,000, which is approximately 20% of the funding, and we're still pending their review of the remaining expenditures.
And TIDAM is the Texas Department of Emergency Management, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And the $3 million is basically what they felt that we would probably need, and then we have to qualify for it. Is that how it works?
So when the CARES Act came out and they issued the funding, all the counties that were in excess of $500,000, they got their money directed from the Treasury, from the Treasury Department. Any counties below that were given the funding through the TIDAM, and TIDAM would issue out, I guess, what they would determine would be equitable per population amount. So we did not get the full funding that the counties did that exceeded the $500,000. We got probably, I don't know, Dan, $58 of $300 and some dollars?
It was 55. It was less than a third. But the initial allocation of $751,20% was just the initial payment. In order to tap into any additional funds of the allocation, we had to justify the expenses for the $751. So we've submitted reimbursement requests that comply with all the requirements totaling the 3.7, but we've only had one reviewed and approved so far for $182,000, which goes towards the $751 initial allocation. So we're still pending, we submitted 17 reimbursement requests. We've gotten one approved. We're pending 16.
Excuse me, Dan, is there a timeline as far as deadline where they might let you know it, or it's going to be a long process?
The deadline to expense this money? And I guess?
For them to let you know.
Well, no.
Six months before you know anything, or?
Well, this funds need to be expended by December this year. So we have to have them in order to expense them. So they don't give you a timeline of when we can expect to hear back from them, but we're hoping to be soon.
So by, hey, Dan, real quick, by the end of November, if you have not already submitted your request for reimbursements, you are supposed to submit a plan to TIDAM detailing out how you're going to spend that money, because the deadline is, I believe, December 26th. So if you haven't already spent it by the end of November, you are to submit a detailed plan of how you're going to spend that by the end of December. Luckily, we have already submitted all our requests for reimbursements totaling the total allotment, but we are going to continue submitting additional requests of above and beyond our allocation just in case there is any additional funding that could be available. We will continue submitting requests for reimbursement all the way through the end of December.
So we've incurred more expenses than the 3.7. So we're going to continue to submit all the qualified expenses and see what happens. Right now, the intent is to try to get the entire $3.7 million, which has been allocated, we just have not received.
Right.
Let me elaborate a little bit, a little bit more. So there was, one portion of CARES Act funding that is, Robert mentioned, was directly allocated to both counties and cities that had populations of 500,000 or more. And then there was another allocation that was directed to the states. And so in Texas, the state allocated a certain amount of that, their allocation, to cities and counties that did not meet that 500,000 population threshold. So that's where our $3.7 million comes from, is from the state's allocation, and it's passed through, and it is directed by TIDAM. So there was a significant disparity between the per capita expenditure on CARES Act funding for those higher population cities and counties, and we have all expressed our dissatisfaction with the disparity that arose there to our federal delegation. But having said that, in the initial stages of determining what this money could be used for and what it couldn't be used for, there were more limitations on what it could be used for than have evolved. And it now appears that more of this funding can be used toward our public safety budget, because there's less of a, and because they've loosened the restrictions on how that money can qualify, or how that allocation could qualify. So the city staff has done a good job in submitting all of our submittals to try to make the deadline and using what we know we can justify as a basis for trying to receive the entire $3.75 million. So this is just a discussion item and an information item tonight. There may be a couple of items that we're, there are a couple of items tonight that we're going to discuss and ask for approval on as we go through the agenda. And then in the future, there may be some additional requests for the City Commission to make specific allocations out of the funding. Does anybody have any questions? Well, thank you very much, Robert and Dan, for that presentation. We'll go next then to item four, which is the consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager on behalf of the City of Harlingen Police Department to enter into an agreement with RIO Gun Club. Chief?
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This is an agreement with the Rio Gun Club for $2,500 for 70 days out of this fiscal year for us to conduct firearms training out at the range. In the past, we had been able to use the San Benito Firing Range pretty much as needed, but in recent years, they've joined up with the federal agencies who have pretty much pushed us out, and we haven't been able to do the amount of training we really need to be doing. So we're asking for this agreement to be approved so we can move forward.
Make the motion for an approval, Mayor, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item five is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading authorizing the closing, vacating, transferring, abandonment of a 0.0860 acre tract of land being a 20-foot alley out of Block 1, City Saving Subdivision, located at the southeast corner of 9th Street and Harrison Avenue, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents for the conveyance and release of any right-of-way and conveyable property to the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District.
Mayor City Commissioners, a good evening. This is for the Circle K project that is proposed at the corner of 9th and, between Tyler and Harrison. And so this is a very important part of the project, which is to abandon a portion of the alley for the project. The proposal is to turn the alley into a utility easement. The proposal is to leave the water and sewer lines in place and to leave a utility easement for the utilities and for the power lines. The AEP has agreed to put the power line underground. This is the survey of the property that is proposed for abandonment to the school district. The appraisal came in at $12,000 from a certified appraisal. We have a typo in your executive summary. It's in the executive summary, it said $1,200, but it's $12,000, and the appraisal is in your packet, the complete appraisal. This is the site plan showing the proposed alley to be abandoned, which is the area in red. So what they're proposing as part of the Circle K project is to provide an access easement, which is this area here in blue. So that will result in not having a dead-end alley. So you have a parking area here for the insurance business, so the people that are parking here every day, they will be able to head here and go south and then east on Tyler. Same thing with the trash collection, that there's trash cans here and here, and then they propose the dumpsters for the Circle K here, so that the trash truck will come in here, pick up the trash, and then exit this way and then go east on Tyler. All the utility companies have approved the request. We got letters of no objection from all of them. Also, we have a letter of no objection from the city engineer to the proposed abandonment. This is the site plan for the proposed Circle K project, and here's the. So this will be a utility easement here, and then they propose the access easement as part of the Circle K property that will continue the alley this way. And so this access easement will remain open and available. They will never be able to block it in perpetuity. It will be part of the subdivision. The next step after this, if this is approved, is to continue the re-plant of the property to turn the two lads into one big lot for Circle K to purchase the lot. Staff recommends approval of the dedication of the utility easement, subject to the access easement, a 26-foot wide access easement as shown, and subject to paying all closing costs. Mr. Reyna also said that if there's additional conditions, that they will not object if there are additional conditions placed on, for this approval.
Allison, really quick, Javier, if I can. So we would also have to, City Council would have to take action to sell the property at the appraised value to the school district. Allison, would that be part of the motion?
Yeah, I would call it a conveyance.
Conveyance, all right, for the appraised value? Okay.
So they are paying for it, or they're not paying for it?
Go ahead, Javier.
Yeah, the school district will have to pay the city $12,000 for the conveyance of the land.
Okay.
Does that conclude your presentation, Javier?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, well, let's go to the item A, which is public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and I believe Mr. Reyna wanted to be called.
I will call him right now, ma'am.
Sorry, but the person you called has a voicemail locked but has not been sent up yet.
Yeah?
Okay, well, if he calls back, we'll take his call. But in the meantime, I'll go to item B, consideration, possible action, approve an ordinance on first reading, authorizing closing, vacating, transferring, and abandonment of a 0.860 acre tract of land being a 20-foot alley out of Block 1, City Saving Subdivision, located southeast corner of 9th Street and Harrison. Authorize the city manager to execute all documents for the conveyance and release of the alley right-of-way and convey the property to the CISD. Can I ask the city attorney to read the caption, please?
An ordinance authorizing the closing, vacating, transferring, and abandonment of a .0860 acre tract of land being a 20-foot alley out of Block 1, City Saving Subdivision, located at the southeast corner of 9th Street and Harrison Avenue, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents for the conveyance and release of alley right-of-way and convey the property to the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District, subject to, one, dedicating a 20-foot wide utility easement along the requested alley abandonment; two, dedicating a 26-foot wide cross-access easement south of the alley to connect to Tyler Avenue; and three, paying all closing costs. and three, paying all closing costs.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading and approve the conveyance?
So.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Uh, mayor, I had a question for Javier I forgot to ask a minute ago. Uh, Javier, so the, the trash, the alley that's gonna be uh blocked off and turned back into Tyler is gonna be coming in through Tenth Street?
So this is here, this area in red, can you see it? That's the alley that is proposed for abandonment. So what they're proposing is to have this area in blue as an access easement. So this is part of the school district property that eventually will become part of the Circle K property. So the people that park here every day for work, then when they go out to, when they go home, they're gonna go this way and then go south and then east on Tyler. The same thing with the trash truck. They will do the same thing. So this, this access easement, because it's an access easement that is, if, if part of the subdivision plot has to be open in perpetuity. They, they will not be able to block that at any time in the future.
Right, so the trash cans or, or the, the, there's two different trash facility or containers there, aren't there? There's one for Circle K and then there's the ones that are being used by the insurance and the church, correct?
All right, there's one here, one three hundred, three hundred gallon container here that I believe is for the insurance company. And then there's three over here, which I believe are for the church. And then the dumpsters for the Circle K are proposed here.
So we're gonna have two different sides and two different traffic routes to their per, per trash?
Yes, uh, Public Works has approved the request. They did check with the Public Works personnel for sanitation and they have no problems with the.
Javier, is it, it, do they still have access off of Ninth Street or is that gonna be closed off?
Closed off, over here.
Yes, sir. Is, is there an inch, cause there's a, there's a, there's an inch, that alley runs all the way through, right? Or is Circle K, is, is, is Circle K gonna close that access off?
Well, it's gonna be part of the yes, it's gonna be part of the park, the concrete area.
Okay, so, so you'll, you'll no longer be able to go to the Ninth Street, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and that, that's actually, that, that's actually a good thing for the, the, the concerns I had earlier about trap, creating traffic on that smaller road. You, it's also, it's forcing them to go to the bigger street, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, 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 yes, the, 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 so the traffic for the, the gas trailers is a different route, which.
Correct, yes. Yeah, the, the gas trucks are gonna come in through here. This is how they're gonna enter and then they're gonna over here.
Coming in through Harrison and, and exiting Tyler.
Correct.
Which is, potentially could cause some traffic concern. Okay, that's all I had.
Any other discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
My motion carries. And item six, public hearing, contain an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit allowing adult business liquor store and a general retail district located at sixty-seven oh one or West Westway eighty-three, suite D one oh two, bearing a legal description of lot two, block one, Cheddar's Stewart Place subdivision. Go ahead, Javier.
Yes, mayor, we have proposed a new uh liquor store in the commercial area over there by Stewart Place Road and, and the expressway. Right here is the Cheddar's Restaurant. And we have a new commercial plaza to the north that is gonna start uh filling up with uh, with businesses. And the, I think it's the very first business proposed for this new commercial plaza is a, is a liquor store that requires a special use permit. This is the plaza that I was talking about and that's the suite where it's proposed. That's the site plan for the plaza. The floor plan for the proposed liquor store. Uh, staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions: maintain state permits, maintain the required parking, uh video surveillance for a minimum of thirty-day retention, and comply with all the requirements of planning, inspections, health, and fire prevention. A public hearing was held by the Planning and Sonny Commission on October fourteen, and no one spoke in opposition to the SUP request, and they recommended approval unanimously with a four to zero vote.
Javier, uh, uh, this, this store, it, uh, it's, it's only for liquor, correct?
Correct.
They won't be selling any of the vaping or the smoke, you know, any of those items?
Only, only for liquor.
Right, but, but if, if they were to try to sell the vaping stuff, they would have to come up with a different permit, is that correct?
Correct. They will have to get a new SUP for the vaping, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to item A, which is a public hearing. I'll hope, I'll call a public hearing, but it's my understanding no one has signed up for the public hearing?
None, ma'am.
All right, so I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consideration, possible action, approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow adult business in a general retail district located in the above-described property, and ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to, this shall decide to allow an adult business liquor store in a general retail GR district located at sixty-seven oh four West Expressway eighty-three, suite D one oh two, bearing a legal description of lot two, block one, Cheddar's Stewart Place subdivision, subject to, one, obtain and maintain the applicable state permits; two, maintain the required public, the required parking spaces in accordance with city regulations; three, provide video surveillance with a thirty-day retention of the video; and four, comply with the requirements administered by the planning and development, building inspections, environmental health, fire prevention, and police departments.
So I'm moved, mayor.
Second.
Hold on.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, uh, asks for a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Raise your hand. Those opposed? Uh, motion carries. I'm sorry? All right, item seven is uh public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading or a specis, or a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at thirty-eight eleven West Business Highway eighty-three, bearing a legal description of one point nine two two acres out of block sixteen, Stewart Place subdivision, survey forty-two dash two ninety-seven. Africa Juan Rivera's, uh, your big break lounge.
Yes, mayor, this is the site of the former Roundup Event Center at the corner of Paloma and Highway eighty-three. And so we, now we have a proposal to, to open a bar lounge at the site. Uh, this is the building that is proposed for a bar, uh, the uh Big Break Lounge. Business, business eighty-three are here and Paloma Lane over here. This is a closer look of the proposed building. Lots of parking. Parking is not a problem at all here. And this is the, what the building looks like. The site plan. Floor plan. Um, good-sized building. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions: comply with the state and TABC permits, maintain the required parking, maintain adequate lighting inside and throughout the property in a, in compliance with the police department, provide video surveillance with at least thirty-day retention, provide a minimum of one licensed security guard during peak hours, which is Thursday to Sunday from nine P M to two A M, and comply with all the requirements from planning, inspections, health, and fire, and police departments. This went before the Planning and Sonny Commission on October fourteen, and no one spoke in opposition to the request. The board uh approved it unanimously with a three to, three to zero vote.
Javier, i- is there not a uh, a stricter uh requirement? Because it's such a large um capacity, the uh, i- isn't there the security, isn't it should, sh- shouldn't that increased not uh, by not only one? Isn't that um?
We, we don't, we don't have anything in the books to that effect, but if that's a concern, the commissioners, the city commission could impose uh, a higher, yes.
I'm just saying, cause I, I'm, I'm, I, I'm not uh sure, but whether it's a TABC or uh, that's just a very large property and, you know, you're gonna have five hundred people that are drinking and uh whatever, and they get out of hand, you only have one, one, one security guard, right?
I believe requiring two uh during peak hours, I think is a reasonable request from the city commission, and I, I'm almost sure that the applicant will not object to that. So the condition could be changed uh to reflect that if, if desired.
Okay, let's go to public hearing, uh, item is public hearing. Uh, man, did anyone sign up to speak at the, for this public hearing?
No, mayor.
And I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, and I'll go to item B, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on uh first reading.
Hold on.
For a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district located at the above-described property. And so if you're gonna, uh, we might wanna mute your line if you have to carry on the discussion off, offline. Thank you. So if the city attorney can read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to Juan Ramirez to allow an adult business bar lounge in a general retail GR district located at thirty-eight eleven West Business Highway eighty-three, bearing a legal description of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-two acres out of block sixteen, Stewart Place subdivision, survey forty-two, two ninety-seven, subject to, one, obtain and maintain the proper state and TABC permits; two, maintain the required parking in accordance with city regulations; three, maintain adequate lighting inside and throughout the property to the satisfaction of the police department; four, provide video surveillance with at least a thirty-day retention period; five, provide a minimum of one licensed security guard during peak hours being Thursday to Sunday from nine P M to two A M; and six, comply with the requirements administered by planning and development, building inspections, health, fire prevention, and police departments.
Is there a motion about the ordinance?
No.
No move?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to ask, commission, do, do they not have any concerns on the security uh potential uh or lack of security?
No, I don't.
If, if you wanted to amend the, the motion, can you just, or does it need to be done at this point?
I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with such a large um facility, only having one. That, that, that's a, uh, uh, that's very dangerous, um, that's a very dangerous uh.
So let me ask you then, uh, with all the previous bars and nightclubs and event centers there, have they, have we required them to have two or more?
That's, that's what I was asking, cause I can tell you the Tipsy Tavern was one of our highest calls out for the police department, and they had a team of security that they could not control, and it was really out of hand and that, uh, and I, I think that's mostly what, what drove them to uh have um, uh, problems with the TABC. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm just concerned again, it's such a large property, uh, I think it would be, um, you know, i- i- it'd be reasonable for us to ask for that. Uh, just as a concern, as a concern for the uh, for the people that are going to that establishment. Um, and, and um, that, 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 just, just to have, I mean, the guys have some kind of backup, I mean, cause uh, it's just such a large facility. And again, the Tipsy, the Tipsy Tavern had uh multiple people up front, and they really had a hard time controlling fights and, and then different, you know, things that they have to deal with every, in everyday bar business.
So, so do you know that uh the uh fire marshal is approved for five hundred people? You mentioned there will be five hundred people there. Do you know that for sure?
Uh, you can take a look at, just look at the layout they just showed out. That's at least a, a, a five hundred uh capacity building.
Okay, can I make a suggestion and?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the ordinance could, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Javier, that the ordinance could be amended on the second reading, uh, and in the meantime, uh, we could ask the uh police chief and uh we could get some more information, you can find out.
That would be great.
And also, we could consult with the applicant and see, find out if he has any objections too. You know, he may, he may be okay with it.
I would appreciate that. I don't wanna be difficult, but I'm just concerned about it.
Ma- mayor, th- this location has been a bar a couple of times over. It just recently became the event center. I think the other thing we could probably do during this waiting for the second reading is to ask PD, number one, what was their experience out there? And number two, ask the fire marshal what the, what the legal occupancy rate is. Because although they have a huge parking lot, it may not even accommodate what's gonna be on the inside. Because a lot of people show up, one person, one car, five people at a table, that's five cars.
I agree, I, I agree with that.
Food for thought, but uh, uh, I agree with you, mayor. We can just, we can, if we just put second reading, let's, let's move forward.
So, so I think the staff understands the additional information that uh commission is asking for, and they can provide that in the packet uh prior to the next meeting and the second reading, and we can discuss it and actually make uh modifications to the ordinance at that time.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's agreeable to everybody, then we'll just go ahead and call for a vote on this first reading. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item consideration of possible action to approve the fire protection services contract between the city of Harlingen and the city of Primera for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Um, the city of Primera has uh approved the fire service contract for the cost of a hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-six and thirty cents due in quarterly installments of thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-nine and eight cents on the following dates: December thirty-first, twenty twenty, March thirty-first, June thirtieth, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as specified in the contract. The rate of the fire petition is determined by the twenty-twenty certified uh total appraised net taxable value of the properties within the city of Primera at the rate of ten cents per one hundred valuation. Contract has an increase of fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-four and twenty-five cents. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
What do you have, mayor?
Sorry, y'all, I was on mute. Go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible uh action to approve the fire protection services contract between the city of Harlingen and the city of Palm Valley for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Also, the city of Palm Valley uh has uh, and approved the, the con, fire service contract last night at their, at their council meeting. They approved the, the contract as a, a retroactive October the thirty fir, uh, October the first of twenty twenty. The uh, the amount of the contract is a hundred nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-nine and ninety-nine cents due in quarterly uh payments of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven and forty-nine cents. Also due on the dates of December thirty-first, twenty twenty, March thirty-first, uh, June thirtieth, and September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. And the rate for the fire protection is determined by the twenty-twenty certified toll, based net uh taxable value of property within the city of Palm Valley at ten cents for one hundred valuation. City of, uh, staff approves, recommends approval. There is an increase of uh five hundred, five hundred and thirty dollars and eight, eighty-nine cents on the contract. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. The motion carries. Item ten, consideration of possible action to approve fire services contract between the city of Harlingen and the city of Combs for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one. Authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Mayor, commissioners, again, the city of Combs is uh, has approved the fire service contract for the cost of a hundred and three thousand two hundred Mayor, commissioners, again, the city of Combs is uh, has approved the bar service contract for the cost of one hundred three thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Due in quarterly uh, installments of twenty, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred twelve and twenty-five cents. Due on the following dates, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty, March thirtieth, uh, June thirtieth, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. As specified in the contract. The rate for the far protection is determined by the twenty twenty certified total appraised uh, net taxable value of the property within the city of, uh, of Combs at the rate of ten cents per one hundred valuation. There is an increase of approximately seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents on the contract. Uh, staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. All right. Thank you all for getting those contracts.
Thank you.
Item eleven, consideration of possible action to approve the designation of an additional B cycle bike share docking station locations and following the terms of the existing interlocal agreement with the Lower End Valley Development Corporation.
Good evening, mayor, city commission. Um, this uh, request is um, to add two sites to the um, to the location for the regional bike share program. You already called back in December two thousand nineteen, we executed an agreement with the uh, L R G V D C. Um, and so originally, they were gonna give us three sites with um, with the uh, the bikes, of course, included in docking stations, those four bikes per station. And so the original locations was Long Sea Hill Park, McKelvey and the museum. And so we wanted to add uh, Hugh Ramsey Nature Park as an additional one. And then um, the new parking lot or the trailhead at Bogus Ford as an alternate. Uh, so in the future, if we ever do get additional funding, we can use that one as a um, as a docking station. Uh, that'll be on the Royal uh, Trail Extension as well. So uh, staff recommends approval. Uh, we've already uh, poured the concrete at Long Sea Hill, uh, anticipating the installation of the, of the docking stations uh, and at the museum. Uh, and then of course, McKelvey, we already had the slab there. So we just need to add power to it and they expect to deliver these uh, bikes and docking stations on the twenty-sixth of October.
All right. Is there a motion approved of additional docking stations?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consideration of possible action to approve an agreement with Total Compensation Group Consulting L P to review the city's four fifty-seven deferred compensation plans and review investments and fees. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, uh, the city of Harlingen provides uh, three pension plans for its employees. T M R S, fireman's pension and four one A retirement plan. Participation in this plan is mandatory and the city provides a match for all these plans. In addition to these, we also provide uh, four fifty-seven plans. Uh, we have three companies that provide uh, these plans, I C M A, Nationwide and Valik. Participation in the four fifty-seven plan is voluntary and the city does not provide any match for any of these plans. However, with recent changes in the legislation, the city must now monitor the investments offered and the fees that are being applied by these companies. Total Compensation Group currently serves as a fiduciary for the four one A retirement plan. And they have offered to do this for the city at a cost of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we reviewed the contract and staff recommends approval of the contract, uh, supplemental services. Ask any questions you may have.
Do, do we have many people in the four fifty-seven?
Yes, sir, we do. Um, the I C M A uh, plan has about six million dollars in it. All from city employees and investments. Uh, Nationwide has about four and a half million. And Valik, we're not really sure. That's the smallest one. So there's quite a bit of participation by employees.
So it's over ten million dollars?
Yes, sir. Combined with all three, yes, it's over ten million.
So we take the twenty thousand divided by the ten billion, we can figure out what the percentage it's costing?
Uh, we can, but, but the city will pay for this. This is not a, a fee that's passed on to the employees. That's correct.
And, and it's legislatively mandated, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and did I read that we're also gonna have to have a board for this or it's just the, the?
We're, we're gonna have to have an advisory committee. Uh, it won't be a board of trustees, I don't think. Uh, it'll just be a group that they provide uh, information on what recommendations they propose. Uh, T C G will be making all the negotiations on our behalf. So they'll just say, this is what we ought to do and then we'll just uh, agree. And then the majority of uh, of what they'll be recommending is a reduction in fees. And also any, any funds that have to be placed on a watch list and potentially removed from the investment groups.
Got it.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution adopting T C A P's professional services agreement with Jexa E- Energy's commercial electric service agreement for power to be provided on or after January first, twenty twenty-three. Gabe?
Uh, mayor, members of the commission, uh, the city is a part of Economic Coalition for Affordable Powers. Uh, that's a coalition of one hundred and sixty-six members. Uh, fifteen of those members are made up here in the Rio Grande Valley. Uh, right now, we have a fixed rate contract that we signed back in twenty sixteen to provide power from January first, twenty eighteen to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. We're paying approximately three point eight cents per kilowatt hour. T cap provides, or buys rather, about one point two billion kilowatts of electricity per year. So they have a, a, a pretty big group that they buy for. Uh, what we're doing is we're recommending that we renew the contract for another five-year term. But that we not have a fixed rate contract. We're proposing that we move to a strategic hedging program. And Bill Starnes, who is with Resolved Energy Consulting is also uh, on the line. He may answer any questions you may have about that particular uh, method of purchasing power. And Margaret Summerby, who is with the T cap, is also on the call. Uh, Bill is projecting that uh, with the new uh, program that we'll be saving anywhere from forty thousand to eighty thousand dollars per year by switching to this strategic hedging program. Now, keep in mind that the, about half of that will go to Waterworks because they're also a large consumer of electricity. So unless you have any questions about the program itself or how it operates, staff recommends approval of the contract.
Well, isn't it a bad thing to do? Um, it's almost like a mortgage and it's always better to have a fixed rate so you know your cost. That may be a question that Mike could uh, chime in on, but um, because when it's tiny, it may save us money now, but next year or whatever, the, the, the rates may go up. And um, I don't know, for twenty thousand dollars, we may not want to take that uh, gamble. What do you think, Mike or Mr.?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was asking Mike his uh, financial.
You know, uh, price of energy is cheap. Uh, in May, it was really, really cheap. Um, I don't know if it gets any cheaper.
Yeah, but don't, don't you think that they, because they're flooding?
You know, since it's relatively cheap compared to where we were a few years ago. I would think locking in at a fixed rate for a while would be a better choice than, than.
They're, they're, but they're. Yeah, but they're recommending to go with a variable, not a fixed rate. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
Right. And, and that's what I'm saying. To me, a fixed rate sounds like a, a wiser choice.
Okay, great. Trying to make sure I was thinking that right because I, 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 the rea- I think one of the reasons the energy is so cheap is, you know, uh, they're flooding the market with all this oil and trying to bankrupt our old companies. At some point, they're gonna stop production and, and uh, I think it's gonna spike up again eventually.
And, and when that is, I have no clue.
Right, we don't. For sure. But again, for twenty thousand dollars, I, I don't think I'd like to take that gamble.
Bill, do you have any, any, any comment on?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, the savings that I'm estimating are a little more than that. Um, I'm looking at somewhere between, based on my most recent estimates, about eighty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year savings to the city. That would be about ten to fifteen percent over your current deal. It is a fixed price contract for a year. It's just, it just changes every year. It's not riding the spot market at all. It's just not fixing down for the entire five years at once. And we see some things in the market that we think are gonna actually drive the price down. One of which y'all probably have heard about has been the influx of batteries that are gonna be coming in. Will help drive prices down along with all the, the new solar and wind that's been coming in. So we think regardless, even though oil and gas is a feedstock and will be cheap, we think there'll be other things to make the market cheaper in the future too. Then finally, I'll, I'll add in that there are off-ramps twice a year that if you want to convert to a fixed price contract, you have two times a year that you can do so.
Do you have an idea what it costs percent or what the uh, the impact of is, of one cent? For example, Gabe used that uh, we, that we're paying three point eight cents right now. If we were to go to four point eight cents, what does that one cent equate to?
Um, probably about fifteen percent.
In, in dollars?
In dollars. Um, give me just a second on that and I'll tell you. It's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's my, um, those are my concerns.
Uh, well, let me, yeah. I have, I share the same concerns that uh, Commissioner Uribe and Commissioner Mesmar have expressed for the amount of, of potential savings, which is being uh, expressed to us in the materials that we were provided prior to the meeting. Uh, I believe Mr. Starnes is now saying that those numbers are different. You know, maybe I would be uh, uh, maybe I'd have a different view of it if I saw the numbers are different, but there's, there's virtually no analysis uh, in the packet. There's just a contract and a summary from the staff that uh, indicates a difference of opinion between what Mr. Starnes is telling us and what they, they told us. So I would suggest that at the very least, we just table this item for now and go back and look at it again. Uh, and try to, and, and if you want to try to give us a better, some kind of a presentation of it or an analysis that we can look at to understand that I don't understand it.
Mayor, we can try to do that for the November fourth meeting. Uh, we can have Bill and Margaret uh, make a presentation of the uh, what analysis they have uh, to show the, the savings, increase in savings.
Now, this is a twenty twenty-three contract. Is that not correct? That's two years from now?
Yes.
And so what's the drop dead date that we have to do something? I know, I know T cap is trying to uh, hedge on this and get stuff because you don't just go from one, go from this to there in one day.
We could. I'd have to ask Margaret, uh, Bill, do you know if we could go through November for that?
Yes, we could. Um, we, we are actually buying, again, it's, it's, it's buying ahead. It's just not buying all five years at once. And we're gonna start buying in the twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one January. So we could go through November, but we really need to be prepared to start purchasing in January twenty twenty-one.
Well, I, 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 I'm one of those that, you know, fixed rate, you know where you're at versus the variable and I, I agree. So I think a little bit more analysis would really be beneficial for us to make a better decision.
Gabriel, can I jump in real quick and just um, real quickly make a comment about how this contract is working? Not from a dollar and cents perspective, but how contracting um, works. Um, yeah, I'm not, I'm, I was like, y'all can hear me. I was, I thought maybe I was still muted. Um, when we go out into the market and buy a five-year contract, what we're actually doing are buying five one-year contracts and averaging it together. The problem is the market doesn't know what it's gonna do in those out years. So three, four and five years, three, four and five. And even when you go out, you know, if you had a contract longer than that, you know, if you were going out six or seven years, the prices go nowhere but up in those out years. And the reason for that is that they put price premiums in there to cover their bets because they don't know what the market's gonna do in those out years. And so when we have a five-year contract, those price premiums are built into it. Um, this, what we're going to do is just buy one year at a time and we're gonna be getting rid of those price premiums. Um, and so we won't have those in the contracts. Again, you know, we can definitely come back in November with some, you know, analysis. Um, you know, and, and more numbers. Um, it's a little hard to kind of tell you what the twenty twenty-three rate is when we're looking at, you know, um, the prices, you know, for the two years previous. So we'll know that next year. Um, but I think Bill can give some idea of what he's seeing. Um, part of the reason we came to our members with this type of contract is, is because in our last contract, the one that expired um, at the end of uh, seventeen, um, we were um, in that contract for a long term and the market changed for the positive fracking happened. And um, a lot of our members were not happy that we couldn't take advantage of those lower um, costs, um, lower prices. Uh, because we were locked into a contract. So by doing this with only buying one year at a time, um, we'll be able to take advantage of, you know, changes in the market, which Bill can talk about uh, again at another uh, meeting if, um, and again, because we're only buying one year at a time. Um, it also allows um, the city to be more flexible if you want to convert it. And if we see prices going nowhere but up, we'd be the first to come back to our members and say, we're locking you in, we're not doing this anymore. It's not a wise choice.
Well, man, I, I like to motion for uh, to um, to reject or deny this, this motion. I don't, I don't, at this point, I don't even want to table it because it's so far out. Did it freeze or, can you hear me?
Yeah, there's a mo- there is a motion to.
Sorry, I think my computer froze.
We, we can hear you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
We, we can hear you, sir.
Commissioner, do you wanna, do you wanna make a, a motion to table it so that way they can at least bring us a, a presentation to the November fourth meeting? Which I'd like.
No, my, my motion would be to deny it. Uh, just because the contract's so far out. Um, the, the, the prices, I don't, I don't, I cannot foresee it getting any cheaper. Cause it's, it's really cheap right now. It's only gonna go up and I, I think we're like, we have another till twenty twenty-two, I think is what, uh, Gabe said, twenty twenty-two is the next.
Well, that's one of ours at the end of twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Uh, but if we're gonna participate with T cap, letting to know well in advance to.
I understand, sir. I just, I just don't, I don't like the, I don't like the setup.
Gabe, this is part of the cooperative, right? So we're part of a cooperative in, 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 in partnership with a lot of other cities and that's given us more buying power. So, so just a question on my part, what happens if we don't approve this? Um, or approve a contract with, with T cap and we go on our own? So with that, would we have to go on our own?
If we're not included with T cap in their load, yes, we would have to fire power from someplace else. Um, city of McKellon just approved a similar contract. Uh, I don't know what mission did. Did they approve also a hedging contract? Uh, Margaret, do you know?
Um, we're still working with mission. They're still um, getting it, um, going through the documents.
Okay.
Yeah, but, uh, well, I mean, I, I really just like to think about Harlingen, you know?
Yeah, but um, I don't understand this is why this, why we would stair-step this and it would be in twelve-month segments. Why can't we just lock in a rate for a longer period of time?
Yes, sir. Correct.
We could, we could. That's an option too. We could do that. It's us who prefer. We don't have to strategically.
But that option's not being presented today.
So, so I, I, I would, I would ask that uh, if you, if we could table this item, we could bring back a presentation with both options for the city council to consider. Is that an option, Bill and Margaret?
Yes, absolutely.
Mayor, we, we have a, a motion to deny. Is it proper for me to make a motion to table or we have to wait until we get a second or, or a day?
No one has, listen, I, I have the floor. No one has seconded the motion.
Right. That's why I'm speaking up.
All right. So if no one has seconded the motion, I think that motion dies. And if you want to make a motion to table, then you can make, make a motion.
I, I think my motion would be to table so we can get some more information.
Can I ask you to, including that, uh, in that motion, uh, Commissioner Leon, that they bring the option of a fixed rate option and not a?
I, I think all of the above should be part of that tabling. I, 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 we, we need more information to, to do this and if, if fixed. We need more information to do this, and if fixed rate is the way to look at it, we should look at both options. And if there's anything else that's out there, guys, bring it to the table.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we can, Commissioner Uribe, we can still reject the idea of a, of a of this variable rate contract, we just need to get more information. And give it my opinion, approve it, and another option.
Thank you.
November fourth, Bill and Margaret could be ready?
It's fine.
Yes.
Item fourteen is consideration of possible action to ratify the donation of oxygen concentrators to the Valley Baptist Medical Center in Harlingen and the Harlingen Medical Center in an effort to assist in responding to the COVID-nineteen global pandemic.
Mayor, city council, COVID has impacted not only the economy, but also our healthcare. At one point, we were the hotspot in the nation for a number of cases, and our hospitals were overwhelmed with COVID patients. In an effort to help our hospitals, they were asking for oxygen concentrators. These are pieces of equipment where they could send recovering patients home and free up bed space, and they could complete their recovery at home. They were having a hard time finding them. City of Harlingen went ahead and purchased fifty oxygen concentrators and donated thirty-five to Valley Baptist Medical Center in Harlingen and fifteen to Harlingen Medical Center. The Cameron County also bought an additional one hundred and fifty that were dispersed to area hospitals in Cameron County. The staff is recommending that the city council ratify the donation of the thirty-five oxygen concentrators to Valley Baptist Medical Center in Harlingen and fifteen to Harlingen Medical Center. The cost of fifty-four, just over fifty-four thousand dollars, would be taken out of the cares funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? All right. This was a really, I think, a very positive thing that the community did to support Valley Baptist and Harlingen Medical Center during the height of their hospitalization spike. So I know they'll be appreciative of the donation. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Harlingen Housing Authority's building bridges to connect to Digital Divide of the Harlingen Housing Authority project. Dan?
Another impact of COVID is the fact that many of our, a lot of our students are doing online learning. And so this has had a really big impact on our housing developments and our housing authority. And Hilda Benavides, our executive director, has submitted a grant application to the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation asking for funding to basically bring Wi-Fi to every development, every residence, which is four hundred and ninety-eight. The request is for a hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. That'll pay for one year of service. And what they're planning to do is do a five-year agreement with Spectrum to bring Wi-Fi into each residence. The total cost for the five years is nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. And so how are they gonna cover the rest of it? They're gonna pay, they're gonna apply for the grant, and then they're gonna ask the residents, starting year two, to pay five dollars each, year three, ten dollars each for the service, and years four and five, fifteen dollars, and year one would be covered by the grant. The cost for Wi-Fi is thirty-two dollars per residence, so the housing authority would pick up the balance. So that, if you put all those, if you all add all that up, you end up with about a balance of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Taking out the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation, they still have to come up with five hundred and fifty-five thousand to cover the five years. So one of the conditions of the grant is that they get participation from the city and the school. The school is, of course, providing the laptops, the equipment. And so we're asking for the city council's consideration and approval of participating in the grant with a letter of support and a commitment of up to one hundred thousand dollars towards this very worthwhile project. And Hilda is on Zoom as well, and she's here to answer any question. But I applaud them for taking on this project, it's much needed. And so happy to answer any questions.
Dan, the hundred thousand isn't one hit, it's one hundred thousand during the five-year period, is that correct?
It can be broken out to the five-year period, or it can be all at once, it's up to the city commission.
But the purpose of the hundred is a five-year impact?
Yes.
Now it's ruining my question.
Dan, I have a question. Is there a possible way, if they get carriage money because they do this, is there a possibility for them reimbursing back the city? The monies, if they get, if they get some kind of award?
I'll let Hilda answer that, Hilda, you wanna chime in?
Good evening, city commissioners and mayor. Yes, what we're looking at is, we want, we need to partner with the city and with the school district. That was a condition with the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation. And what we're looking at is, if we don't need the money from the city, we will not ask for it. But if we do, we'll go ahead and ask for it. And what I was looking at is breaking it down on twenty thousand a year. That is what I'm looking at. So twenty thousand a year breaks it down for the five years. It's not a lot on the city, and it would greatly help us with our endeavors to get internet for our residents.
Yes, I think that's great, I'm just asking that if, if during the next few, if there's a reimbursable that you get through the federal government because you qualify, because you provided this service, and they give you the money for the cost of these towers or whatever we're doing for them, is there a possibility that, again, we could get reimbursed for the money, any monies that would have been expended?
Yes, sir, of course.
Because I think it's a great thing, I think it fills a very important need. I know the school district, I have, you know, my kids that are in school, and they're having trouble with the Wi-Fi, even with the little hotspots. This is a very targeted, specific area, so I am very appreciative of all the work that you're doing. You know, it's just a question.
Yes, sir, we would get the funding, we would reimburse the city.
And also, this is not Wi-Fi, this is actually Spectrum to each individual unit, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
And so that means that child has full high speed, not some little hotspot that he's having to rely on a tower?
Yeah, I think it's awesome.
That's over the top, very good.
And Spectrum is gonna lay out all the fiber optic and all the wiring on their expense.
Wow.
Yes.
I have no problem, I have no problem making the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign. The motion carries, I want to applaud the Housing Authority and Hilda for taking the initiative to help serve those who need it the most. And I'm glad that the city will be able to show its support for this to the Legacy Foundation and to hopefully increase your chances of receiving the award. So congratulations, and thank you for putting this together.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners, greatly appreciated.
Item sixteen is the consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding and application affidavit between the City of Palm Valley and the City of Harlingen for the City of Palm Valley's flood infrastructure fund application.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. First, I'd like to note that I got placed towards the end of the agenda today. I don't know if it's just coincidence or I'm being punished for the lengthy presentation I did last meeting.
You have to have all your sound, it's not corrupt.
But I got a thirty-second, or I got a thirty-second presentation.
Your time's up.
You're on the clock, sir, you're on the clock.
All right. Oh, Mayor, Commissioners, again, good afternoon. The City of Palm Valley's prepared or has submitted an application to the Texas Water Development Board for the flood infrastructure fund. This is for drainage infrastructure improvements that they're doing within their city limits. The application process does require that they notify the adjoining cities, Harlingen being one of them, in that they submit an attachment or a memorandum of understanding that they've coordinated with each other, or with us in this case. And so the documents at this point are being presented for the city mayor to sign, and we're presenting those to you all for consideration and approval. There's no cost associated to the city, and staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item seventeen, board appointments.
I have none, sir.
None.
Anybody have any board appointments?
None, ma'am.
Hearing none. Eighteen, which is an executive close session, attorney consultation pursuant to section five fifty-one point oh seven one, Texas Government Code in connection with pending litigation and arbitration demand arising out of HPFFA grievance number two thousand and twenty dash oh eight involving entry-level fire twenty and possible partial settlement. There is a motion to go into executive session.
Move, Mayor, second.
All right, so we'll exit this meeting and go in separate executive session Zoom meeting. So we will meet you on the other side, as they say. We are, are we, are we live?
Yes. Yes. Senator, are we live?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
All right, we're out of executive session at seven nineteen. There are no other agenda items, so this concludes our meeting for tonight. I want to thank everyone for their participation, and I wish you a good night, a safe week. Remember, wash your hands, wear a mask, watch your distance. We still need to keep things, our hospitalization rates low in our city. Thank you and good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. Good night, guys.